You got someplace to go with you?
No.
You got someplace to go?
Always, always.
Usually it's not more than one person here at all.
Oh.
It's your style. Two.
Help me in order? We've got seven of them, we'll start off with.
Hey Mayor Manny.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Kiel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Discussion? If you're all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? None? Okay. Any no bills submitted? From a new section on our agenda, um, put on there by State Law, it's been open for public comments. Similar to what we had in the visitor section before. Uh, it's now a place where we can take action on, on anything that's in there, but we can take time to hear public comments. Hear from public, anything like that, any idea out there, so. At this point, does anybody from the public want to come up to the podium? Okay. Now if we move to the next section, I'm going to the visitor section. We have Richard Carlson and, I don't remember trying to name right. Ruckell?
Ruckell.
Ruckell, okay. Please come up to the podium, discuss possible changes to city ordinance 430. It's our live document, city ordinance. We'll take a couple of minutes for this item and a couple of minutes for discussion and, um, we'll move to that. Make sure, please make sure you get the names for the minutes for Theresa too.
My name is Richard Carlson.
I'm Ruckell Leeper. I'm here with him today, uh, tonight. He has chickens and it's something that I hope you guys would consider, you know, amending the ordinance to allow to be with city ordinance. Hence, uh, only obviously, I know he has this and this hasn't been updated since 2003, so Sioux Falls has that, um. It's just a good thing, I like, I'm not the one that owns them, they'd be on his property, but I'm just kind of helping him out because I've done this in Del Rapids before when in front of the, you know, city council. But, yeah, I mean, he also, I mean, talk about the, it's not for a profit thing.
Yeah, I, I got these chickens about a year and a half ago because I live up on the north side of Mobile Home Park. And I flew it through our park manager and she was under the understanding we could have it because it was private property, but she talked to the city last week, I guess, was informed that we still have to follow the city ordinance. So I've had them for approximately a year and a half. I've helped the humble pantry and the Lutheran church there for the past year and a half give you eggs to the needy and I do give eggs to like Ruckell and then a couple of people, a few other people in the park. And I would really like to be able to keep them, I wasn't aware that I wasn't allowed to have them, they have a nice chicken coop and I have a 56 by 56 lot that I have a privacy fence around and everything. Um, I was aware that, I found out from Sioux Falls and I saw the news reports that the company could have them, but I was not aware that we aren't allowed and I'm hoping maybe on, I love that.
How many do you have up there now?
I have ten. And if I, my understanding of the rule in Sioux Falls, would you get six with neighbor approval, you can have up to ten. No loose stores, I don't have any loose stores. But they do have a big chicken coop, it's about a 20 by 10 foot chicken coop and everything that they stay in at night. Um, Rosie adopted the city earlier this week and said that she, uh, there's been no complaints on them, no smells, no.
So is your property? By King at the east entrance and straight north, is that your property at the intersection there?
No.
Uh, of the, part?
If you come into Munt, if you come on Munt across from the RT stuff, if you take a left, and then an immediate right, that would be the second house on the right with the big privacy fence.
Okay.
Well, I'll jump in here a little bit, uh, Richard, I, I'm surprised that, that, uh, you've had them for a year and a half and we haven't had anybody else come in and ask for chickens. Mr. Monahan and I can testify to this, I believe five years ago, we had the same thing that, that came up. And, and, um, we did allow one resident to have, um, a, a chicken, uh, maximum of six, by the way. Um, and immediately after that, we had a deluge of people wanting chickens, uh, which, which kind of, uh, made it, uh, kind of uncomfortable to the point where, where we certainly didn't want to, you know, have a, uh, mass hysteria of chickens running all over Hartford, South Dakota. And, uh, while it's good to hear that you haven't had any complaints and all that kind of stuff, um, I, I know that at that time, it was kind of the, you do it for one end and do it for the other. And, uh, Mark, feel free to expand at any time on anything else you want to add here, but the one thing I'll end with is that, that, uh, you know, uh, the, the, the setup, the criteria is another thing that, um, I'd like to see the visual of to really, if I really had to make a decision in favor of this, I'd like to see some of the pictures to get a better idea of what it is that, that, uh, you know, we're talking about here.
I do, I, I did take some last night on my phone, but I wasn't able to develop.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And Scott, one of the things you're saying is, is since then, ordinance 430 has come into place.
Yes.
Which can, you know, 14 have basically eliminated, you know, any livestock and then they listed out pets and things that you couldn't have, so. What were you going to expand on?
I was just going to expand on Scott's comment, when, when we went through this in the past, uh, like Scott said, there was one family that had them and then I can't remember, I can't remember how that went away, but then there was another, there was another family that gave them a little girl. And were we doing it unconditional?
Yeah, basically, the.
Free serve?
The way the ordinance read before we changed it was, you know, you weren't allowed any livestock which chickens fell under except by special permit from the council. So you'd have to come to the council and ask for a special permit and that's how we got.
That's what she came in for.
Yep, that's what those two came in for.
And the council at that time turned her down and then we changed the ordinance to just, so there wouldn't be any exceptions.
Except for the one that was grandfather clause.
Um, they don't have any more.
They don't have any, no.
They had some issues and those are gone now too.
I, I won't speak for this council, but I think I'll speak for the previous council because they're not here. But I, I think it, I don't know how, I don't know how you regulate. Saying chickens is the easy part. The coop, the fence, it, it's everything that goes along with the chickens. Because my, my idea or opinion of how it should be differs from yours and differs from everybody else's and, and you get so far out in the weeds with how much room, what kind of fence, what kind of coop, how big a coop, you know. Hey, I just, I, I don't, at that time, there just wasn't any appetite to try to, to try to check all those boxes for a chicken, really. I mean, we're still dealing with the, this is apples and oranges, but we're still trying to figure out if grass and branch drop off. That's, that's been a nightmare for 10 years and, and that's a far cry from a chicken, you know, and an upset neighbor. So I just don't see.
Yeah.
Because I guarantee you, if, if you're the exception tonight, there'll be someone else and that person will have a different idea of what a fence is, what a coop is, how they're going to take care of them. And I don't know how we tell them no, if we tell UBS and then there'll be another one that'll have a different idea on a coop and a different idea of a fence and a different idea of what the neighbor's opinion is and who cares what the neighbors are doing. So, I mean, just because, just because your neighbors don't care. You know, that, that's all, there's, there's 28,000 people in this town, you know? And, and you're, you're obviously surrounded by people that don't care because you've had it for a year and a half. I'll tell you what, if I put some chickens in my backyard, I'll let the phone be ringing off the hook down here, so. So I, I just don't know how we. I commend you for, for having good neighbors and, and nobody raising a flag for a year and a half and I don't know how the flag got raised this time either, but, so I commend you for that, but, because you're obviously taking care of them, not having problems if they're willing, but I don't know how we make you the exception and, and move forward until somebody in the future don't.
The last thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to, you know, and I think you probably figured out the posture, at least where Mark, Mark and I stand, is, 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 is that, um, I, I really sympathize with your circumstance because I love farm fresh chickens.
Chicken's great.
And it's, and it's a great thing, you know, as a matter of fact, I get to tell my sister every chance I can, who lives on a farm. But, uh, you know, I just want to just end by saying that, uh, it really has been our experience and I know it's going to be an inconvenience on your part if this is voted to, you know, end the, the circumstance, uh, but, uh, it, it's a circumstance where, where really, I hope you can understand, our, our hands are somewhat tied here. My councilman to my right, you know, I mean, they haven't had a chance to really maybe have much discussion regards to this, but, uh, it, it's, it's been Mark and my experience and that's why we're voicing our opinion, is that, that it can be a, 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 become a big issue. I have one person that's, that, that texts me constantly, uh, in regards to, you know, has the posture changed? And the only thing I could think of, that I told him, was to, you know, making sure that Mr. Both, uh, has, when he does, you know, an inspection, that there's such tight specs and like Mark said, everybody's going to have a different configuration, you know, I mean, they're not going to have 25 square feet extra, you know, in the backyard or whatever may require. Um, and, and, uh, and once again, let's say, you move it down the street to someone else and, and it, it could be an issue, so. I'm going to make a motion to, uh, to deny, um, uh, the permission to, uh. Is there a point of order here?
Yeah, can I just mention one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So like I said, currently, our ordinance does not allow, even by special.
Right.
You know, permit from the council, so basically, where our ordinance reads now, if you want to not allow chicken, it doesn't allow chickens, so we don't need to change anything, we don't need no motion for anything.
Okay.
If you want to consider changing our ordinance, then I would need a motion.
So as far as, then would, uh, Mr. Both be the one that would implement, uh, removal of the chickens?
Yeah, I get that for sure.
Okay.
Probably me, probably the main site.
Yeah, and once again, I, I.
But I, I've already made phone calls to find homes for them if they have.
Yeah, if they can.
Would I be able to get, you know, till the end of the week, you'll be able to get them?
I'd have no problem with that at all. I, I, as a matter of fact, I'll stay here and sit here and say, I, I can give you the month just to make sure that you, you have that, you know, I mean, you haven't done anything wrong, I mean, well, we're afraid of that, you haven't made anybody mad in your neck of the woods. And, and, and I don't think, uh, another 30 days is going to make any difference, so, so I would, you know, would say, end of the month, uh, I'll, you know, maybe make a note to make sure that Mr. Both, uh, you know, doesn't drive by, checks things out and leave, leave it at that.
I appreciate that.
Okay, appreciate you coming in front, it's really, alright, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And being honest and, and coming up and being forthright and honest, I really do appreciate that.
And just to clarify, we have no control over ordinance violations. So it's up to our higher, they do what they need to.
With that, we'll move on to reports. Sheriff Deputy report, Captain Walsh, you see it?
I'm significant, I'm shorter than Tyrone. Far better looking. Good evening, thanks for having me, Captain Walsh, for having met. I don't have a report for you as far as Tyrone is, I don't know what he normally talks about, um, if you have any specific questions about the past, uh, couple of weeks, I'd be more happy to answer them. But I do know that if you want to talk about the above contract hours, so I'm happy to answer any question down about that.
So as you know, one of the things we've been looking at is just different options for contract hours, we understand that you will need to know if we're going to significantly change our hours, you want to know if we need to wait a month, if I remember right.
Yes, ma'am, uh, we're going through our county budget process right now and so the sooner we know, the better, uh, because it, I think the final request needs to be in by January 15th or 20th or something like that, when the budget is actually finalized, middle of September, I believe. Of course, I mean, there's always things we can do if, if, if that's moving to the government, but that, that's what will be best for us.
Yeah, definitely, okay, okay. So Theresa has some scenarios in her packet that are the same as what you have on.
Right. We, uh, we had a quick sit down the other day, um, Deputy Albers, Ms. Adel and I sat and I kind of went through a few of the scenarios with, um, the, uh, the options. There was, um, obviously the one that you currently have, uh, you know, we put in, we put in a significant amount of hours at night, um, and on the weekends, we tried to get out there a little more during the day, but we're still putting in the hours at night. And Deputy Albers keeping his 40 hours of Monday through Friday, um, which, uh, which I believe the city likes and I know he likes doing it, he likes being in, in the city Hartford, I think he's developed a pretty close connection, uh, with the people here. Uh, and then we talked about option number one, um, which would keep, uh, which would keep Deputy Albers here, um, and then increase the hours on the weekend and on the evenings to more of a full-time, uh, more of a full-time post where we will have someone out here nearly all the time every day. And I think that, uh, that up the hours to 148 or so, or something like that. And then, uh, and then option two, uh, option two was to go to 12-hour shifts, um, and that one would be about 22 hours a day, you know, to give lead time for shift change. That's similar to what we have in Del Rapids, which is, uh, which is, um, they get, I believe it's 154 hours a week, um, which comes out to 22 hours a day. And well, as soon as our guys get through a shift lineup, they head up and they head back about half hour before the shift ends and the next guy goes up right after shift lineup.
Question for you Theresa, we had budgeted increase this year, what was the dollar amount we just threw out?
We figured that out, we increased it, we used to have 40 hours of random, we went up to 60, so we added 20 more hours. Currently, what are we at, $32 an hour?
No, currently for 20, we're at $33.91 an hour.
$33.91, so. So we've. So we've increased the budget about $35,000 for those 20 hours for the year.
And under option one, we're talking another 86 above what we already bumped.
Right, that would be above that rate.
Uh, and just, uh, as a note, for 2019, um, the hourly rate, the increase, I think it's 2.4% or 81 cents an hour to $34.72 an hour.
And the figures I put in here, I figured that new hourly rate at $34 an hour. So these would be our costs next year if we decide to make any changes.
Now, similar, a little larger for me, Del Rapids, but similar, they've had, they've had more, you know, they've had more patrol for a number of years. Now, when I talked to the mayor of town over there a little bit, he had said that they went to that, they used to have their own police department in Del Rapids and they went from having, managing a complete police department behind their own to this. So, you know, one of the things that Theresa and I talked about a little bit is, we're looking at a step up. When they did this years ago, when they were probably about our size and maybe even a little smaller, they were actually taking a reduction in costs, like getting rid of their police department, doing this way, so, um, just, you know, just one of those things to know, comparing apples to apples there.
Yeah, um, when I came on, they were already at, uh, and I started patrol in the year 2000, but it was three eight-hour shifts at the time, it wasn't 12-hour shifts. Um, and we, and, and we had, we were full-time up there already and I think, uh, they went to, uh, sheriff's office late 80s, early 90s or something like that. And, uh, I, I think it was a lot of, a lot of cost savings for them, a lot of liability savings and, uh, the good thing about having the sheriff's office versus the police department is police department will find anything if you have five, five officers, one goes on vacation, you have four officers. If you have contract hours with the sheriff's office, you get those contract hours whether someone's on vacation or not, I think that was one of the figures that was going to be about not having to burden that.
Sure, sure.
Well, just really my two cents there, I think it's, I think this town is getting to the size and I think we've had enough trouble to, uh, to dictate going to 24-hour coverage or just about 24-hour coverage. So in my mind, in my mind, the only question really just boils down to whether we want to keep Tyrone in town during the day or if we just want to have the random 12-hour shift, 24 hours a day.
And, and Mr. Monahan, I just want to make, uh, make one point, if, if you do go to that, the same deputies would be assigned out here, but because, um, we have separate night 12-hour shifts, it'd be a different deputy, um, every other night. But it, but you'd be the same deputy every other night.
Oh, okay.
So I.
And, and I, when I bring up Tyrone, I mean, because Tyrone was the resource officer.
Yes.
So Tyrone knows, Tyrone knows things in this town that your night guys don't know.
Absolutely, so I agree with that.
So that, that's, it, I mean, honestly, I, I think just because Tyrone brings that to the table, I, I would like to see us option to stay with.
Yeah, and.
To go with option one, I mean, if Tyrone's alright with staying.
I think, and I confess, I'm a little bit confused by the numbers on here because I thought that, um, um, by using Tyrone, it would be 139 hours, um, and then the full 12-hour shifts would be 154 hours. And so I think the cost estimate, while it's, it's not a huge decrease to go with option one, uh, with Tyrone, I don't think it's that much.
Kind of went over with Tyrone and maybe we got confused on the number, well, we weren't figuring the shift changes in there too.
Right, the, the shift changes would have happened in option two, that would be 22 hours a day, whereas with Tyrone, it would be, um, about three and a half hours a day, Monday through Friday.
The cost is maybe a little bit less.
Someone in town, of course you get coverage anyway, you call 911, we're coming.
Well, if, if I look at this correctly, so the downtime would be 5:30 and more until 8:00.
Tyrone comes on about 7:30, I believe.
Well, I mean, the downtime is going to be 5:30 to 7:30.
Yes, sir, just Monday through Friday.
Typically, we've had a lot of trouble in Hartford between 5:30 and 7:30 in the morning typically.
And the SRO is generally here by then, running radar and doing that too.
And then, and then the only really, what, 4:30 to 6:00 in the afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I agree with, Mr. Monahan, I'd like to see if we'll go with option one again.
I agree, um, but also, what's that, $121,000 increase in two years for spending there? Are we going to be okay with that? I mean.
Well, it'd be.
I want to be, you said the only question is which one do you go with?
I said.
I gotta be a question.
The only question, the only question to me.
Yeah.
The only question to me is whether it's option one or option two, because I know it wasn't that long ago that there was an 18-year-old with a handgun and meth. And that was pretty close to my house. So if, if we can't, oh, I don't know, buy something we really don't need next year, I don't really care.
No, Mark, I think, I think you're mistaking my question here.
No, I know what you're talking about money and I.
Absolutely, and if it's, if it's close to your house, it's close to all of us.
Oh, sure.
All of our houses in this, in this room. What I'm saying is, what do we got to do to make this happen? So what do we got to cut back or do we have to cut back?
I think if, if we have to cut back, we'll just have to cut back some of the fun stuff in order to have more police protection.
I'm bringing it up so we have that conversation.
And, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to, uh, if somebody wants to know why they're not getting fun money, then I'll just say, hey, because, because we're contracting more hours because we got a bunch of due counts waiting within this town.
Are you saying that to, to make it retroactive effective immediately or are we going to wait till the next budget?
No, this, this should just be budgeted in October, they just, they need to know.
Right.
They need to know what we're planning.
I just want to make sure I was with you on that.
Do you need a motion for that Theresa or is the consensus alright?
Well, I would like a motion just so we don't go back on the sheriff's department because they're going to do their plan, you know, so I prefer a motion, you know, of course we'll do it, you know, definitely by motion when we do our budget, but, you know.
Would this start January 1?
Yeah, because that would make the new budget cycle.
You can't only do it here, right?
Yep, yep.
No matter when we do our budget, we can.
Right.
You guys have the manpower for that?
We're, we're getting really close, um, I was, I was chatting to you about staffing this morning, um, just a little history, when I became captain, I, I met a lot of you when I became captain, we were 10 deputies down, right now we're one deputy down, um, but we're having a couple of retirements, many of you know Sergeant Preston Evans just retired, so while we can't replace him, we can put someone in his car at least. And so we're getting there, um, our staffing levels at this point are really good, if we're going to add this kind of hours, that just means I need to add a few more. Uh, and so with the lead time, if, if we get this decided within the next month or so, with that lead time, I can get someone hired, trained, and then, you know, January 1, we can jump right on the horse and start.
And the biggest thing I want to point out is, uh, not to lose Tyrone, I, I mean, I, Tyrone obviously knows the kids, uh, knows the, and I'm not pointing any fingers at just the kid, but, but he knows the ins and outs of Hartford and so on. The only, you know, option two, in my opinion, is not an option because we would lose Tyrone, um, and basically, option three is basically what we have in place right now.
Right.
And, and we know that it really is not sufficient, um, so, uh, I'll make a motion to go with option one, can I make it that simple? Probably not, but.
Second?
And I just, uh, just to touch on that, Mr. Nelson, Tyrone doesn't want to leave, he knew that by bringing these options, we had this discussion, that he might lose the spot that he really loves, uh, and I don't think I use that word lightly, he truly loved being in Hartford. He knew that by doing this, he might lose it, but he was looking at the best interest of our benefit if, if we wanted to go to a house, and so, no, he didn't want to go either, but he knows that, you know, this isn't about him, um, as much as, as much as we all want to keep him here.
And the difference between option one and option two is $197. Tyrone's well over.
It might be more.
It might be some more, okay, alright, we'll find out in budget time.
There's something I'm worried about, the cost, I think we just need to make that investment in the city, um, let's, let me ask this, I've had two instances, one here and one in Sioux Falls where I didn't have enforcement, one I really wanted on. And that's frustrating, uh, like you wouldn't believe, you know, and I think with what happened recently, more presence could help and if nothing else, were there to better respond, so.
This type of option at 25,7, also, it's not, it's something we can put on. This type of option at twenty five, and also, it's not, it's something we can put in place and they can stay there for quite a long time. And be enough coverage for quite a long time, and quite good population value, so.
Gives us, gives us another curve, understanding, can you guys just transition to a, a new software, maybe Zooker?
Yes.
So how can I, as a councilman, uh, utilize your software, your data to tell my constituents? This is where we were in twenty seventeen, or twenty eighteen, and this is where we're gonna be in twenty nineteen, if we look, if we, if we jump forward one year from today. With it, with this increased presence, would it justify the increase in our budget to, to, to the people of Hartford?
Right, um, with, uh, with that software program and the previous one, we can, um, mine that for specific calls for service, specific. Uh, school zone infraction types, so we can, we can make that as narrow, as wide as we want. Um, as, if, if you have parameters that, that we can provide with you, for you, more than happy to do that, even, even going back a couple of years, uh, previous to Zooker. Um, we can certainly do that, there were, I had an issue with Humboldt's calls being coded incorrectly. But that's to be expected with, uh, a brand new computer system, but as we're, as we're getting through that, I think. That information will be really easy to get for you, absolutely, um, Teresa certainly has my contact information, and, I mean, you, it's. It's, it's your law enforcement service, that data is yours whenever you want it.
Cause we work on it, we're, we're always kinda got it right now, you know, with that, you know, we have some personal experiences, but.
Right, all, all anecdotal, and I, and I'd be more than happy to, um, uh, at the next council meeting, send Tyrone with all those numbers if you like, or, or I can come back more than happy.
I don't know if we need those, but it's nice to know we can get those.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Simon.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Kevin Ross.
Yes, sir, and again, if you have any questions, uh, Teresa, you can always get ahold of me, and I think you can too, and more than.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item up, city engineer, Porter, Mitch or Ross or whoever.
Yeah, I'll start it off.
Kevin?
Uh, just a couple notes on wastewater treatment facility, uh, spoken with Larry a little bit, John, and we've gotten your documents kinda coordinated. Actually, comments back to them, so, you know, freshen those up and start scheduling those meetings for the landowners who are the next couple of weeks. Uh, John would be attending those and, I guess it would be coordinating with Teresa for times on them. Uh, Vandermark Avenue project is out to bid again, we've got, uh, July thirteenth, a bid on there. So we'll open bids again on that day, and see, I expect that we're gonna have bidders at this one, and the last one, we didn't have any bidders. Um, we've changed the date to November fifteenth for completion, and that seemed to interest a lot of the contractors again to, to get us a bid, so.
Quick question on that?
Yeah.
What's been going on up there, it looks like there's some, maybe some, some drilling, some, some.
We had the soil borings, the project two thousand, another comment, some of the contractors requested was some soil boring information because of sewers. Fairly deep that we're proposing there, uh, so we did two soil borings on there to add to the plans and specs, so they had that information. I'll let Ross talk about Swenson Park, he's gonna handle the inspection on that job, and Nicholson Road.
Good. Evening, um, with the Swenson Park, uh, we received contract documents and we're finalizing all the signatures, making sure everything's in order with those. Um, and then we will issue the notice per, to proceed to the contractor, um, I've been coordinating this week. Um, to schedule the pre-construction meeting, which looks like Friday at ten AM, is when that's gonna be held. And then they're planning on starting construction, um, sometime next week. Um, and I would imagine they're gonna be pumping some water, mobilizing, and then they're gonna strip topsoil, but. When I talked to them, they said they, they anticipated probably the first week or two would just be pretty much just stripping topsoil on the whole site. Is there any other questions or comments about that project or those other things?
Which Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
Are we okay with the sports guys, are we gonna mess with their stuff right now? We don't mess with softball fields, but will we mess with soccer fields?
Should be.
They're done. They're done? Till this fall or? They're gone, okay. They shouldn't be staying off all that earning, so they, that's outside the project. Right, okay, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Um, we moved down to Nicholson Road then, um, the utility contractor's been working, they. Um, completed some of those sanitary sewer connections that they still had to do to those tuning cul-de-sacs in Kelly Point. Um, they installed all the underdrain, um, along both sides of the road, from Patrick Avenue up to about Shamrock. They, the prime contractor, Sukup, installed a temporary creek crossing down just on the south side of that bridge. Um, they couldn't get across that bridge with their heavy equipment and their, you know, loads of bedding material or rock. Um, so they constructed that entrance as an alternative to driving down, all the way down Nicholson, um, especially with the weather. Uh, they were kinda held up because they couldn't get materials in. And just a, another note on that, on the weather, I guess, um, just so you guys are aware, um. Since that last meeting, I think there was five working days that they basically couldn't do anything other than pump some water and. Kinda try and clean things up, um, so they are probably a little bit behind on the utility schedule as of right now. And we did discuss that at the meeting this morning, and, um, Site Works is saying that they're gonna throw in another crew. To help get them back on track, and if they still are a little bit behind, Sukup said they would. Send in a utility crew to help out with some of the utilities as well. Um, I guess for the coming weeks, um, well, even since I typed up this report, they installed all the forest name. From kinda that, where the creek is up to Shamrock now, they just finished it up today, and they're gonna keep going with the water main. And Sukup anticipates graveling that first in sixteen hundred feet or so sometime next week, at the weather climate. Um, so besides all the construction stuff going on on Nicholson, we did receive some comments from the. National Flood Insurance Program, or Coal March Middle, um, there was mostly some minor comments and updating a few exhibits. Um, to their style, and I responded to all those comments sometime, or last week, I believe. And so they are, have everything they need, I guess, to con- continue with their field. And then my last item on here is, uh, I have a pay application number two. For Sukup Construction in the amount of two hundred and twenty five thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty two cents. Uh, this pay app includes all the work completed in the last month, and it also includes stored materials for Site Works. Um, they have all of their twelve inch water main, all their forest name is sitting out there, um, and all the fittings, hydrants, valves, anything associated with that. Um, is all onsite, so they submitted a request to get paid for, um, those materials that they brought in.
Um, there's a board crew, uh, right up along Highway thirty eight over weekend, what do they do?
Yes, uh, they drilled a casing pipe, though, uh, a twenty inch steel casing pipe. Across the highway, and then they'll run a water main through there, um, and that's just a connection to get on the highway for future extension.
With, uh, authorized pay request number two, if you can.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, yes, but I got another question, how wait, do we get over there?
I'm woke, Mason? Jones?
Yes.
Vernon?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
So Ross, out there on Highway thirty eight where the, the road comes up over the bridge and then down the ways to the east is a set of flags. Is that where the road's gonna connect?
Uh, there's, there's a few cones, and then there's, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that, where they were boring right there, that's pretty much the center of where that boat is gonna intercept, Highway thirty eight.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to make sure.
I just wanted to comment, I, are both you and Mitch authors of this, this publication, great job, guys. I mean, I, I really appreciate it, cause I didn't have a chance to get out there on a garden maze, and, 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 cause I know he's wide as like a hog. Uh, but this got me caught up in five minutes, I appreciate it very much.
I didn't go to the meeting today, I seen them all stare at each other, I didn't walk down there. Yeah, I was, I was more.
Next item is Mike Franken Trail, um. Last week, we sent a letter to Sukup Construction, letting them know that we're gonna get them until July sixth to complete all the punchless work. Um, and if they didn't complete all the punchless work, we're gonna start, um, assessing liquidated damages. They responded right away and basically said that they would get on it as soon as the rain stopped. Um, and they did start work on that yesterday, they were out there grading in some of the pitches and, uh, making sure some of the pipes were cleaned out. They continued with some of that work today, they do still have a few items left to complete, and one of the major ones is. They're gonna have to resee a lot of that area, um, to see it when we drive by, that most of. Um, kinda just self, the soccer field, all weeds, so I instructed them to. Basically kill off all the weeds and then resee those areas, and then any other areas where they're doing any grading, we're gonna resee those as well.
Ross, I think, I mean, I noticed that obviously we got some, there's a Mitch, there's a word you used about four or five months ago, the, the heavy hitting, whatever. Where the, obviously, the, the soil is topsoiled, you know, you know, cut, um. Is, and I, and I don't recall ever seeing any, any, uh, uh, something to stop it, small veils of hay, straw, whatever it's, whatever it is. Um, are, are we gonna maybe plan on doing that a little bit so it doesn't happen again?
The mulch, like put mulch down, you're saying?
Mulch, or, 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 you know, where it stops the water from moving so fast that it causes the erosion?
Yeah, we feel we need some of the water in the middle, I'll put some down.
Yeah, so it sure seems like it's, it's about, I could tell about eight inches deep, just, you know, not pretty deep. It'll probably happen again with this year's going, if we, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, two cents worth. Thank you.
That's all I have for my, uh, force account or?
On force account, we haven't had any much, we've, you know, national landing, plane review, we've been looking on that, and. You've been doing some inspections in Kelly Point while you're on Nicholson Road, so they've got most of their streets put in there, I think, and super water's all tested.
Yeah, I'll touch on Kelly Point, all the curve was installed, um, all the utilities are now installed, everything's been tested out there. Just this week, they were kinda back going behind those curves, and, um, I think they're starting to. Well, they, they've been working on putting in the first house up there, so they're anxious to get our utilities gonna, you know.
Actually issued two building permits for up there, so.
You had mentioned, at the last meeting when I went, Ross, uh, they were talking about July twelfth for curb and gutter starting down on our end head east, is that still on the? Plan, or are they gonna move that back away?
July twelfth, maybe next?
Thursday?
Thursday.
I think that was the date he said, that day.
I think that was kinda the window when the contract crew was free, um, I think everybody's kinda been pushed back, so. I would say probably the next week, is kinda when I would expect that more, so I think they'll need all of next week probably to dry out and subgrade again.
Yeah.
And get it ready for base course to be put down.
I'm surprised it firm up as well as it has, actually.
The drain tiles seem to really help, it's a big one too, that's true.
Cause it was, it was on the best, so.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Hey, Mitch, Ross? All right, moving on to, get the report first, public works superintendent. Neil, are you covering Greg's report, or should we?
Yes, I am, yes, I, okay, yep. Um, I guess as you guys can see it there too, um, Sir E. Seal, he's got a, uh, meeting set up for that on the fifth. That he's gonna be back and going to, we've, uh, trimmed quite a few trees in the area and been spraying the gutter lines too, just trying to get that, get ahead of them there. We're not sure on that, if we're gonna be first out of the chute, or if we're gonna be put somewhere in the middle, so. We're trying to be as ready as we can be, and if they wanna come here first, uh, we ain't holding them up, so. We've been patching streets, been doing a lot of that stuff too, um, Meg Water, um, you guys can see that out on the roads, there's a few spots out there. That are questionable at best, you know, we rolled a few rocks around without really trying to tear it all up and make it a big mess, but. Some of that's gonna have to be run over again with the maintainer and, and, you know, get that, get that taken care of, so we get a few more bumps out of there. Um, Craig put on here for the crack ceiling, uh, he received a quote from Brett Metters, the highway improvement. Uh, price per foot is seventy five cents per foot, uh, it's an increase from last year's budget, or from last year's number, but. Uh, the one he used for budget time, um, it's been first increase for, since before twenty fifteen, so I would say twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen. Last time they took an increase on that, um, they've done the crack, crack ceiling in the past and treat us right, and they, they do with that. They, they get in, they get their stuff done, and they get out of here, they don't mess around for two, three weeks trying to do one days or two days worth of job, so. Um, patching, like you said, we've been doing some of that, if you drive around, you see cones out on the road, that, that's what we're doing out there, trying to stay out of that. Um, sweeping, we've been doing that, um, we probably haven't hit, uh, every week as scheduled, but we've been trying to, trying to get out there and stay ahead of everything. We're kinda shorthanded right now, so this week we probably haven't got too much time to sweep, because we're doing that, we have a couple of people on vacation, so. But we, we still have it scheduled, so, um, equipment, Craig put down, all running good, yeah, we don't really have any problems with any of that. Um, payloader, you guys can read, the reps are here, all three of them are, um. Boulevard tree policy, uh, no updates at this time, um, Emerald Ash Board, he's got no updates at this time. And if you drive around and look at a few of the ash trees, some of them got that yellow fungus sticking out of them, some of them need to be cut down right now. So, I mean, you might see that in upcoming months, that somebody's gigantic tree needs to cut down, that we're gonna be cutting it down, so. Um, tree pile, um, we've worked on the road out there, he's gonna contact, uh, Jim Anderson. See if the road's sufficient for him to get his equipment in there to grind it, so we don't have to burn it, we don't have to incur the cost of getting rid of the ashes, so. Um, cold road, he doesn't have any updates, I ninety interchange, um, they had the meeting down here at the fire station, it went well, he says it's pretty informative. Uh, mosquitoes, we've been spraying weekly, um, I know if you go outside right now and there's no wind and you're stepping in grass, you're gonna get carried away, so. We are planning to spray them this week for sure, I think Jess is probably, he's plan, planning to spray tonight, so. Uh, water main project out there, we, we've completed that, uh, sewer, blood station, everything's working good down there too, so. Any questions or?
I got a question, Neil, do you, do you ever remember anybody doing crack sealing in town other than highway improvement?
We had one other company, the Road Guide, that did it before.
Ever million or?
I, yeah, I'm not sure where he's at, we've only had him, what, one or two years, and then he just, I don't know, he kinda got crazy with these prices, and he was really tight on his time. When he wanted to come, and, I mean, he was kinda hard to work with, so, we didn't fit into his schedule, he didn't care, so, he just took the backseat, so.
Seal Pro's does it too, and they're, they're.
I, I just don't remember the last time we even looked at another option.
It's probably been ten years ago.
And I kinda wonder if we should, but how you said not to do it this year?
Well, I know with him, when he gets these numbers for these, he calls all of them every year for budget time, and tells them that I want your number. And then Brett normally beats him, and, you know, he's very flexible with his time, so.
Uh, the big spot, Neil, down there on Kelly, just down from, uh, Todd's place. Has that been fixed or gonna be fixed, what's gonna happen there?
We're gonna get down there and get it fixed, we're trying to get the roads, uh, the slurry seals going down, get that down, so we ain't holding them up. Cause we don't wanna be last on the list, cause then that takes us back into school.
Yeah.
School time, so we kinda wanna be on the top side of the list, so we're doing all the roads that are slurry sealed first, and when we're done with that, that's our next one. School time, so we kind of want to be on the top side of the list, so we're doing all the roads that are slurry sealed first, and when we're done with that, that's our next one.
Okay.
That's a big, within, I would say, within two weeks.
Okay, that's a big spot.
Yeah, yes it is, yeah, they tore a lot of the road up, yeah, so, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the crack seal pull for your, for highway improvement? Motion second, discussion? Drummond?
Yes.
Chell?
Yes.
Ian?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Or?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Neil, the clay pipe, does that remind me again where those are at?
Um, I see, I didn't realize we had a second page, I only have the first one, so, sorry about that. Clay pipe, that is on, right out here, we have a block of it between second and first, right out here, that's eight inch.
On, on Main Street?
Yes, yep, and that, that has a lot of flow through it, and I mean, it has a lot of connections, you know how small the lots were, every one of them's got a connection, whether it's used or not. Elm Road has got it all the way, and then between fourth and sixth, on Munt, that stretch, and that stretch is really questionable too, we've had a lot of homeowners up there come in and put new plastic outdoor, outdoor clay. And then there's some off like Ninth Street up by the trailer court up there.
Did we televise that month?
Yes, we, we televised all the clay, I think, three years ago, was it three or four years ago?
I think two or three, yeah.
We televised all of it, and.
Munt's probably the worst one, or the one we want to keep an eye on.
Right.
What's your opinion of Kelly, is there clay on Kelly?
Yes, there is.
There, there is on, we, we did find that, the last manhole, the north one, that, we were the, that was clay, we did look at that, yes, I'm glad you brought that up, that one is clay there too.
He wasn't, I was.
I think some, someone approached me and said, they're probably next for their water, their water main to go bad for their house, it seemed like, said it's just kind of been going down the block.
Well, yeah, we've had that, we've had that on Kelly, when they put that water line in, our line is fine, but the service lines, we found that are, the, the poly that he put in, I don't know if it was cheap poly, if it set out in the sun, but it's very brittle. It does not take any shifting of the earth at all, it just shears, you can pick it up, and it's supposed to be flexible, pliable, it don't edge shears. That's, we had the same issue with the one that we fixed, that, with the big hole down there that was.
What's, uh, where's that at on our, our, our improvement?
Well, see, these have been service lines, that have been breaking, not our main.
Where's, where's Kelly at on our, our streets to improve?
It was number five, it's now about ten, I don't think we've had Kelly.
Oh, exactly, we haven't had Kelly yet. It's been listed as one, future one, so it's, it's ten plus now.
Yeah, I think that's in my work.
We've always had it on the radar, but.
Yeah, we've had all the clay pipes on the radar, and when we televise them, I mean, that might push one up sooner than later.
Thank you. How much, speaking of Munt, how much money have we parked over the last couple of years for do that sewer project, has it been two budget cycles, or?
I think we've done three, hang on a minute, I may be able to find it.
You'd already done one before we got here.
I think we've done three cycles, but.
Plus we forgot to do it last year.
That's over progressive thinking.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm really glad by that. Can we put James on for that? Just another comment, too, the backstops are still bent out there, we have that on the list to try to straighten out, so. It's not something that's gonna happen probably next week, but within the next two weeks, we'll, we'll try something to see if, it's something that we can do something feasible, or if it's something that.
Not like a hail dent, like it's really hot, they straighten out?
Yeah. I told them, we just have a plane flying over, just drop something on it, give them a tug, and see what happens, so. Now, Craig's got a plan, he talked to the guy down there about how to do it, and the right way to do it, so. I think if they're kinked, you're not gonna take a kink out of a round pipe though, most of the time you crack the round pipe, and we'll have to do something, so.
We have a hundred and forty thousand sitting for six, three, eight month improvements. Well, three years we had, we've budgeted. Forty thousand, fifty thousand, or fifty five.
What was the estimate?
We haven't done.
It's gotta be, it's happening.
It's more than that.
He just pulls those dumbers, doesn't he?
I just had a thought, yeah.
And whatever he says, Google it.
Yeah, he doesn't wake up for a nap, yeah.
Alright, let's, uh, thank you, Neil.
Thanks.
You guys, the payload area. So, we got a nice, nice spreadsheet here, kind of a nice layout of anything on there, it maybe wouldn't hurt for us to talk about it a little bit, and then we've got questions for the reps that are on hand, and we can send them out to those, have them come up, talk about what's going on there. Hopefully it's in the normal package.
Could you review the numbers, so everybody hears them?
Sure, so, just on their summary sheet, so, the three companies that we had bid the payloader was Butler with Caterpillar, Titan had a case, and RDO with a John Deere piece of equipment. Butler's base bid was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty, Titans was one forty-nine, one thirty-eight, and RDO's was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven seventy-five. Each, so each of, we also got a call back from each of them, what they would, uh, give us for our trading and our piece of equipment. Butler was forty-four thousand, four, Titan was forty-four thousand, seven twenty, and RDO was forty-two thousand, five. There's other, a couple of other options listed, not all have the same options, a couple of them had buyback options. Titan does not offer a buyback, but does offer a lease program, and then some of them offer maintenance, so, you know, it's kind of hard to do apples to apples with those things. Each offer kind of a little something different, but they just provided for your information.
I think you had the notes, or maybe Craig had the notes, that we, over the fourteen year history of the one we have now, we, our average has been five hundred hours a year. It's been increasing every year, it probably used to be a three hundred hour average, and now it's probably a six hundred hour average, but.
That's what Craig's been saying, so in your packet also included a, a maintenance sheet on our piece of equipment that shows, you know, what's been done at what date and at what hours, you know, on the equipment, and what's actually been done. Craig, yeah, mentioned to me, he thinks, you know, when we first got it, we definitely put more hours in the last few years than when we first got it. Seems to reason, we have more streets, we kind of put a few snow in beds, so, you know, it does, we have people to run the equipment, we ended on Terry, you know, the last few years, so it's not just sitting, it's being used, yeah. So he was actually kind of thinking, probably, you know, we're up to that, maybe about six hundred hours a year, kind of, we're in the range of what we'd be using it.
That's impressive, the only thing we don't have is the total of what on our maintenance costs.
The total cost?
Yeah, that, that's, that's very impressive, I wish I kept track of my, prepared that well.
Just keep long for the thing from you?
Yeah, yeah, that's me just to do that.
You can think Dylan just about.
Every piece of equipment, so.
Are you guys doing that service, or?
Most of it, yes, yep, we don't, most of the time we document it, like when we took it down for the wheel bearings down there, and I had the seal, that might not be on there, that might have been something that we missed. But we have it in their paperwork down there, we just didn't put it on there.
So, I know we spent a lot of time asking questions about guaranteed buyback. The question is, are we gonna keep this thing fourteen years, or are we gonna go with guaranteed buyback and get new equipment every five years? Because that's really the.
Doesn't matter?
Well, I don't, I don't know if it does, Mark, but I'm just saying.
No, I mean, I don't, to them, doesn't matter, like, is their bid price, does it have to have buyback, or not? Okay, so it's an option, that's not my problem.
I don't think they care if we keep the thing for fourteen years, I would say. Right.
Well, it would, it would be different, it would be different on the case, because the case doesn't have the buyback, they're just offering a lease.
Right.
And if I'm looking at this right, the case is cheaper to lease for five years. Well, just the numbers I'm looking at, it looks like leasing a case is better than the John Deere and the Caterpillar buyback. As far as probably operating per year. We got different methods, though.
Tell me what you got, Ken.
Well, I'd say eight thousand, five ninety-two eleven, that's just with the spec price, you know what that's gonna be. So I'd say a hundred and seventy-nine, five fifty, minus forty-four, four, minus a hundred thousand.
Oh, you can't, you can't sometimes go forty-four, four, just take the cost of the machine, minus the buyback. Is that going to be in the pocket? Well, I didn't, I didn't figure in the, I didn't figure in the trade. I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about cost per operating per year. Alright, fair enough, that explains. Without, without a trade. Those things are different, some of them, okay. Because once that trade ends gone, you don't get the next door out, it's just gone.
And you know, these traded numbers, we don't necessarily have to trade in our piece of machine too, it's pretty well maintained, we could always, you know, bid it out, take bets on it.
I don't know that we ever really have good luck doing that.
I think I have pretty good luck on other pieces of equipment.
You know, pardon me, it's a little, whether you go to buyback after so many years, or if you go to lease option. I don't, I think a lot of the cities around this area that are moving this equipment as much as they are are recycling it every five, ten years, a lot more often than, than keeping them for fourteen years, fifteen years, ten plus years on time, I mean, I wonder if you guys can comment to that, what you're seeing out there, but what I hear from down in Harrisburg, some of that, for instance, that they're they're not, they're not keeping all the equipment around, they're kind of going through, and just keep updating, getting a lot of schedule, and just go every five years or so, is that what you're seeing?
Yes, just to kind of interject there a little bit, I'll apologize, I agreed to cover for the, the normal salesman, since he's out of town for the Ford, so I'm kind of getting.
Come on up to the podium.
Kind of getting thrown from the frying pan into the fire, so to speak, but my name's Chad Kissel, I'm with RDO. As far as the, the buyback versus keeping it for ten to twelve, fifteen years, it all depends on what the, what the council wants to do going forward. Are we, are you spending money on maintenance, if you're spending some money on maintenance, then that can kind of come into play, where hey, we could make a partial payment, or part of the payment to a new machine, rather than kind of rolling that over, but, yeah, most of the people that we see do exercise buybacks, it's just more of a, kind of a guaranteed kind of thing, where we know exactly what it's gonna cost us per hour, so.
Chad, can you spell your last name?
K-I-S-S-E-L-L, two S's, two L's.
Yeah, thank you.
Neil, do you remember how much we paid for the payload we have now, was it one forty-eight change?
I, I wouldn't say you're right there with it.
It was under one fifty?
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't say you're right there with it.
And we got it for fourteen years?
Well, I, I don't know what Craig's told the council, or what he hasn't told the council, we don't use any piece of equipment more than we use the payloader. Other than a pickup, that is, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the time, if there's something leaving the shop, it's a pickup, and the payloader's coming right behind it. I mean, we've, we've had that thing fourteen years, I mean, we haven't really done a lot of maintenance to it, I mean, big maintenance, like, you know, high dollar, really expensive stuff. I mean, we had two bearings go out on the front, and we had to take it in for them to fix. They were really good to us, they rent, gave us a machine to use for, I mean, they just charged us an hourly rate, we had it ten days, and it was somewhere between three hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars, we had to put ten, eleven hours on it.
Harv is really not a harsh climate, though.
Well, when you're, when it's snowing outside, we, I mean, it's a piece of equipment we use for everything, I mean, there isn't anything we don't do that we don't use that piece of equipment.
The only, the only reason I ask about, just because I don't have the numbers, I'm sure Craig would know, but I mean, fourteen years ago, if you look at a hundred, let's just say a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar investment, it's currently worth somewhere between forty and forty-five. So you're right, it costs you a hundred thousand bucks to run it for fourteen years, so you're at, I mean, it, it's cost the city seventy-eight hundred bucks a year, eight thousand bucks a year, so, I mean. Austin, does that payload have a steering wheel, that cat, does that one have a steering wheel, you get them with Alvin correct?
That one's steering.
That one does have a steering wheel?
So I, I wouldn't be opposed to a lease either, because I think you could do the math and figure that it's gonna cost the city seventy-five or, seventy-five to eighty-five hundred bucks a year to own it. You know what I mean, with the pressure and everything else.
It's taking, you're gonna buy it back, you can lease it?
At the end of the lease term, either you, you can either, or no, are you buying it if we lease or buy it? Yeah, we'll put that, our, maybe going up into those state bids, you're gonna have to surplus your machine, and that's our guaranteed bid price.
Another thing to consider, don't forget, just to talk about a lease, is if you do the lease, you, you keep cash upfront. You're not putting the cash all out of all the loans either, and so you're putting out eighty-five hundred dollars this year, you're putting out eighty-six hundred dollars next year, and you're holding on to that cash that you would have normally gotten rid of, so.
Want to say, your, your first lease payment would be due till 2019, because that trade would factor in, it never did advance payment, and then your first payments due one year after. What do you think, Neil, is there a, is there a pro or a count of lease versus purchase in your mind?
Well, I know, you buy it, you own it, you know, I mean, you know, same way with the car, you can lease a car, you know. Thing I don't like about leases, you can tangle a lot of stipulations, I mean, what if we go over ours, what if something major happens to it? What if our tire wear doesn't equate what they think our tire wear should, you know, what if there's something wrong with the seat, what if there's a broken piece of glass? What if we have something happen to the fender, I mean, we can whittle away at every one of these numbers that, you know, that ain't gonna meet the criteria when the time comes. And I mean, I'm not trying to sway you guys to buy whatever, that's, that's your guys' decision, I'm just speaking because when we had a maintainer issue way back, you were here when we had it, when we had a maintainer issue, there was only one guy that come to the plate then, and that was RDO. Only guy that wanted to come and help us out was RDO, there was nobody from Cat, nobody from Case to be seen.
What was that on?
On our maintainer, on our blade, we had an old one, we had a guy that come, and he was the only one that was interested in helping us, he brought us three, four, or five different machines to figure out what we liked, what we needed, what we didn't like, what we didn't need. We didn't need a front wheel assist that the guy was trying to sell us, no, he said, that's fine, we didn't need it. He was the only one that come, only one to come to bat for us on that, so, I mean, you guys might think we're picking John Deere because, you know, it's middle of the road, it's not the cheapest thing, it's not the most expensive. We have a track record with RDO that, I mean, I can, I can go into detail with this payloader that, I mean, they come out and picked it up the same day we had the issue. They brought us another payloader out here, brand spanking new one, sitting on the floor down there, they brought it out, told us to use it, said thirty-five bucks an hour to fifty bucks an hour. I mean, who's gonna do that for you, bring it out to you and say, you know, we got the right piece of machine, it'll fit every piece of snow equipment you have. Go ahead and use it, when you're done with your machine, we'll swap it out. I just checked into renting a three-foot vibrating tractor, that's four hundred and seventy dollars a week, whether you use it, whether you put an hour on it, whether you just leave it set in your shop. We didn't even pay that, and we had it for ten days, a piece of equipment like that. I'm just saying with them, I know the track record with RDO, I know what we're stepping into, I know what we're sitting in. And that, I mean, I'm not trying to sway your decision, it's just, I know what we get with these guys, we go, if we get one of theirs, we go to one place for filters. We go, you know, talk to one place for everything. You know, whether that's ideal in your guys' mind or not, that's totally up to you guys. But I just know from experience with this machine that we've had no issue with RDO. They've been behind us the whole way, almost anything we've asked them to do, they've done. We didn't have to wait a week to get a machine, we didn't have to wait for them to find a machine, we didn't have to take a smaller machine. We didn't have to go and use their bucket, wreck their bucket on snow, any of that. We used their machine, hooked our equipment up to their machine, no problems, no questions asked. I just, something I'd like you guys to consider.
Thank you. Sounds like you're trying to sway us.
I, I'm just speaking from experience, Mark, you know how it is.
No, I, I appreciate your opinion, Neil, that's why, why would I ask you? Cause I, the one thing I know about you, you'll give it to me if I ask you.
And I'm sorry, I won't give you code either, so.
I think all three vendors you were offering are all that same stuff.
What year was that, Neil?
Four, maintainer was, uh, like two thousand and three.
That's, that's when the issue was? You guys probably still.
Yeah, that's when we had our, that's when we had our, what was it, not a galleon, what was it Terry, a piece of junk we had. We went down and had the motor replaced on it, had the crank replaced, cause there was something wrong with the crank, got it back here.
Don't get me started on that.
Yeah, used it once.
Don't get me started on that.
And then that was broke, would not warranty absolutely any part of it, so me and Craig can just tore the thing down. Got the old crank from a guy that put the new motor in, put all that back in. Still had issues with it, I mean, it was, it was beyond its duty out here, it was one of those for two miles of gravel every two weeks, nothing more than that. If you used any more than that, the thing was gonna break down. I mean, it was, it was.
Alright, just taking that as a choice.
Okay. What was the question?
Come on up. Section two point two one, joysticks, steering system.
It can be an option, it's, it wasn't on this little repeat. It's got an inter-hydraulic.
Is this your, do you form a fire option?
That's the Minnesota State bid, when they break it out like that. That gives you every option you can order through our price list.
Alright, do you have any other questions for me and the reps that are here?
Can I?
Come on up, yeah.
So just for the record, can I, can I get with the buyback number for trees?
Yeah, so the two that offer buyback, buybacks for Butler were a hundred thousand. Um, that was for max hours of four hundred thousand or five years, and then RDO's, the John Deere was a hundred and seven thousand four. And that was for three thousand hours and five years, four or five years.
Okay. And then what's a lease option?
The lease option through Titan was eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and eleven cents a year.
Um, you guys have any questions on Mark Gold? I know, obviously you got the price for the last couple meetings.
Right.
We can give you a buyback. Maintenance was always the question, we'll throw the maintenance in there for the, the price we're getting originally. Kind of look to match case, I don't know what, what RDO's offering for the maintenance. Um, our buyback number is off the five to four thousand hour. I guess the reason with that route is that was the only number that we've got, it'd be the corresponding from Craig, so. With RDO coming with a, a lower hour. I guess I, I guess that's just for the children. If you guys do go over your six hundred hours, now I'm just against giving your buyback up. So if you go over twenty-five hundred dollars in that five years. We're gonna forfeit your buyback, alright gentlemen?
I can't speak to what Brad all put together, but I do know that that one oh seven four number is a three thousand hour buyback. Uh, is that five years?
Yep, he said three thousand or five years.
And did he provide a lease number at all, or was it just a buyback?
He did not provide a lease number.
That's true.
Any questions for me on our offer proposal, machine?
Travis has the one that we will wonder about, the steering wheel or joysticks. Well.
We've looked at it several times.
I'm deferring. I can't make a motion, I am interested in the, I mean, I, I have, I see less holes. And that, that there's holes, these are all pretty really good offers honestly, and then just less risk to the city. Um, the, on the lease with three thousand hours for three years. We're not quoting that right now. Adding a two-year service agreement for the thirty-nine dollars and saving the cash in our budget. I had a hard time stepping off of that one, but I'm curious what those are the council thinks.
Which one are you looking at, Jerry, the three-year lease?
Case.
Case, three-year.
Five-year lease.
Yeah, five-year lease.
Five-year lease.
Three thousand hours. Yeah.
Yeah, three-year lease.
That, that lease, that lease is based out here, like a four thousand hour.
Here's a question I got. How, can I ask RDO first, do you offer a lease?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Alright. So here we are, we got multiple options and nothing's the same. We got different service options. We got different. Buyback hours and years, we got one with a lease. Like. The, the question is, how do we make an educated decision, because it's not a formal bid, we're trying to compare. But if we decide tonight to go with a lease, that's not fair to the other two bidders who weren't asked to provide a lease or didn't think to provide a lease.
If I, so I'm just gonna throw my two cents in, because this is the third or fourth time we talked about this, and we keep moving to finish line. And I appreciate you guys playing ball, I really do. But as I sit here, and after I get Neil's opinion. We, we literally went from purchasing. To purchasing with a buyback option. But being as how Case didn't have buyback option, they throw on a lease, now we're talking about leasing, that's never been. And I wanna go right back to the beginning, because I've never leased. I don't think that I've never leased a single thing in my life. I, I just like the tangible, I own it. And if Neil goes on a fender and piles it up, we own it. It's not a lease, it gotta scratch, you know, cause it. I've heard the horror stories about when people turn cars in that are over miles and have stains, scratches, dents. And you're at their mercy, they pick you apart and you're at their mercy, and I'm not saying any one of these gentlemen would do that. But if you own it, you can drive it through the building, in one end and out the other, and it's ours. Gets more sighted. And don't worry about the scratches, so I, I, I wanna, in my mind, I'm not gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote for anything but buying it. And. I truly wish we could afford a Cat going. I really do, because I think. In a perfect world, if I was the only one making the decision and I had enough money, I'd give the Cat, just cause it's a Cat. But being as how I'm sitting here spending taxpayer money. I'm, I'm thinking about just outright purchasing the Case on the John Deere. And then I can sit here and I can make the case, well, I can make the case for all three of them. But with the straight, the straight buyout, I don't wanna spend that much taxpayer money. And. I mean, the case, the case looks good. Just on initial investment. But I know, I know Craig's passionate about a John Deere, I know, and I doubt Neil's passionate about a John Deere. And I, and I do know, I mean, obviously RDO and the city of Hartford work good together, because I haven't heard one bad word at RDO. And that's not to say Cat or Case wouldn't be the same. But I mean. I know RDO stepped up to the plate, because I've never heard a bad word about them. You know, and, and in my mind, that's for something, so. I mean, it's, it's no, it's no different than crack seal, you know, we, we haven't got a, we haven't got a bid on crack seal for God knows how long. Is there, is there somebody out there that's a nickel sheever a foot or a dime cheap? Well, maybe there is, but, I mean, do they work with, do they work well with the city guys, I don't know. So.
But back to your comment, Mark, we gotta go with the number, we have to, so if we wanna have it apples to apples, we go with the numbers that we know. Which means you don't even look at the back two columns, you look at the first column and the second column, what they're gonna guarantee is to buy our used one.
Right, and I'd be curious what it is per hour, when it comes to, you know, like, mileage on a car. You can come up with a dollar figure of. What's we're gonna look for, appreciation?
I, I know on our machine, the hours are about the same as the miles. There ain't a whole lot more miles than there are hours on it. So, I mean, any like we're out driving it around.
What I'm saying is, we have one proposal that's four thousand hours in five years versus three thousand. And the prices are different. And so if I own a machine that's got four thousand hours versus if I own one with three thousand hours and they're the same machine. What's my net difference? What? What's it worth here?
Oh, my question about.
In other words, if, if the other bidder would've known to bid three thousand hours, would've his bid been a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
You're not comparing the same two across the board.
Right.
Right.
And so what I'm saying as a council member is, I think we need to say. We're gonna do the buyback, and we want four thousand hours, three thousand hours, five thousand hours, but. It's like bidding Mickelson rode and saying, we want a road build guys, and then we get five different bids. And Mitch tried to explain which one to go with, or for us to decide.
You're not comparing anything that's the same.
Right. You know, so, that's what I scan.
And as I said, I don't know if I could really support anything right now, either way.
Just to kinda help you with that math, I just did the, the math, I'm owning the, the Cat over four thousand hours on that buyback. It's nineteen, about nineteen dollars an hour, almost twenty, on the deer on three thousand hours, seventeen dollars an hour.
There's a maintenance check. Three thousand or five, three thousand dollars, maybe?
Generally, of the first bid, I'm, I'm just kinda off all your lead, a little bit out my wheelhouse on this one. And, and I'm just sucking up everything, these guys get to say and get to check, I'll go, I'll go with you on the, on the, uh, the lease option, I, I like owning it, you know?
I agree, that would, I like owning it.
So with that being said, to, to try and make the, the Cat and, and the deer comparable, we've gotta add in the seventy-nine oh five maintenance plan to the deer's price, right? So now we're. Hundred seventy-nine versus hundred sixty-six. We're thirteen thousand dollars different.
Travis, what was the maintenance plan?
Uh, the deer maintenance plan, seventy-nine oh five.
For three years, you don't know?
I don't know.
Three years, five thousand, or three thousand, five years, three thousand dollars, I assume. Doesn't say.
They don't say, but is that?
Question for the deer guy, has your preventative maintenance plan for?
I'd like to say I probably did, cause I.
I, I just threw it on.
Yeah, seventy-nine oh five, and that was eight hours of twenty-five hundred. So it doesn't go up to three thousand.
Right, twenty-five hundred hours and a half, that's a factor.
Just for fun, and because I don't wanna talk about this anymore. I'm gonna make the motion, if I can find it. I'm gonna make the motion. That we purchase outright, well, minus the trade, but we purchase on Minnesota State bid of John Deere. For one hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Put guaranteed trade in at forty-two thousand five hundred. Okay, got a motion?
I have a first and a second from you guys.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay.
All things being equal or as equal as we can make it, when you add in the NJPA price. And the buyback and the guaranteed, or just. I'd say, I get it down to about a ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-dollar difference. Between the Cat and deer.
I agree with Chad's math, on the nineteen.
The Cat with nothing got in front of your nineteen eighty-eight an hour, if you add deer's maintenance plan in, that takes it up to nineteen ninety an hour. And I know Neil said the deer's treating well. I think she didn't email trees to us, but. Um, we'll throw the maintenance plan in, like I said, so that, that's included in our hourly cost, three or three thousand hours. We'll provide a molar, if the machine goes down, we'll provide you a molar during the warranty period, so. That would match what RDO can play with the machine.
Austin, is that something that Butler puts in writing as a signed contract between the customer and, and the dealership themselves, there will be a, a free molar?
I can put that in contract, we actually have a Butler guarantee that adds in a molar. We got a black line in front of us here, so.
Yeah, it's a good question, you know, so. Any other question?
Well, just for clarification, ours was in no warranty period when they did it for us. Ours was fourteen years old when they did it for us, when RDO did it for us. We didn't have any warranty, we didn't have absolutely nothing left from them, they didn't owe us a thing, so, I mean, just to be clear. I'm just.
All three vendors have taken.
Right, right, I'm just trying to state the facts, that, I'm just what they did for us, I'm not trying to say that they're the best thing since lights red. And everybody else should be throwing away, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just trying to state the facts of what they did for us, when they did it for us, and the ease it was for us, that's it, that's all I'm saying, so. That's the, the, picking the payloaders on you guys, so.
You're looking at, you're looking at cost over three years, right Travis?
No, I'm just, I'm just like doing some math.
You're looking at cost per hour.
I'm, I'm doing simple math here, I'm taking a hundred seventy-nine five fifty. Cause you mentioned the buyback, so then I subtract out the buyback. And then I take a hundred fifty seven thirty-five and subtract out the trading, and have the buyback with the trading, you know, the trading numbers are right there. And I add in the seventy-nine oh five. And I just take the top number, which is the Cat, divided by, subtract it off of the John Deere number, and that's what the difference is ten nine seven.
That's maintenance.
If we get to the five years, we've got a thousand extra hours. If we did that. With the Cat.
Yeah. That buzzer is in there.
Yep. So we're running six hundred plus right now.
Yep, yep.
And that's, that's John Deere basically right now, what we're currently on, which I'm sure will go up. I don't know, I just.
Yep.
More discussion about the motion that's on the table.
I have a question coming up.
Hold on, hold on, just one second. Is there more discussion about what's out there?
Might discuss the hundred and fifty dollars of Cat personally.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Um, am I essentially out with the no buyback? I'm hearing a lot of that's, and both these guys said, I mean, you're, if, what if you have two years of large snow events and those buyback numbers are out the window?
Well, that's where we go to four thousand hours versus three thousand.
But, you mean, four thousand hours, you're at a, like you said, you're going up steadily year by year? So what happens in two years if you're at seven, eight hundred hours a year?
Well, that would be eight hundred. So, if we steadily go up and we finally at five years or eight hundred, we still got a buffer in there, so we could really might apply them numbers anyway.
I don't think you're out of here.
Again.
Just, just to clear one thing up, the,
you can currently buy back at four thousand hours even if you're not to the five years. So if you're approaching four thousand hours, we'll still buy it back at four years.
And that's the same way that the, the buybacks work across, across the board.
But it's all about hours.
It's all about hours.
Four year.
Yeah, four years.
Yep, yep. All right. We have a motion, we have a second. I'm gonna say one more thing while we pull her on this. I think one of the nice things is, I know the other two didn't provide any of these numbers on there, but I think the nice thing about these numbers is, you, you pretty much lock in what your annual cost is, right now, we're hoping to lock in what our annual cost is. If you go with the lease, you know what your annual cost is gonna be. And you can budget for it, and you can plan for it, you don't have to set money aside, you don't have to sit and have this discussion every, however many years. You go ahead and do it, but.
Fourteen.
Financing, it's a lot easier.
Every fourteen years.
Yeah, fourteen years, right? I don't think we're gonna do it every fourteen years at that, but. Any more discussion?
Wait on.
Yeah. More discussion from the council? Okay, we're gonna vote. Does anybody need to hear the motion again?
Yes.
Okay, motion was made by Montan, seconded by Kiel, to purchase the John Deere payloader at one hundred fifty-eight thousand seven seventy-five with the trade-in of forty-two thousand five hundred.
Okay. All right, vote, let us see, Kiel?
No.
Gordon?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Jones?
No.
Am I?
Yeah.
I was gonna keep track, but I don't think that passed, right?
No, it didn't pass.
All right, do we have any other motions?
Right. Well, if we're looking at strictly dollars, can I just have a little discussion?
Absolutely.
If we're just looking strictly at dollars, if you look at the type of case either way, buying it straight out or going to the lease, it appears to me that that's dollars wise is a better deal.
I would agree with that.
I mean, and but we haven't had it, we haven't had a piece of case equipment out here that I'm aware of, do we, Neil?
Nope.
Nope, we've, we've driven it, we've tried it.
Yeah.
Austin, to address Neil's concerns or his comments about how the, the equipment, everything just fits, is that, what concerns do you foresee? What? If, difference between a cat and a deer, as far as everything currently fits to you?
Uh, the price you have includes a couple that matches your work base. So that was, Craig asked for that in the original email, and that's a couple that we did.
Case.
Yeah, same.
Same, same.
All right. We've discussed it a lot tonight, discussed a lot, a lot of other meetings, but I'm here on motion, we'll move on.
A little need by the. Can we just like? Can we stop talking about them?
What, what do we have budgeted again?
We have a hundred and sixty-one thousand, I believe. These are all under budget, let me double check that.
With trade-in, they're all under budget.
Yeah, with trade-in, they're all under budget. One sixty-one, yeah.
Make a motion by the Butler with the guaranteed buyback? Or, excuse me, year? Yeah, buyback, forty-four thousand four hundred.
More trade-in, okay, gotcha.
Trade-in, how are you gonna need it?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
I have a question. So this is purchasing the cat for one seventy-nine five fifty with a forty-four four hundred trade-in.
And a three-year two thousand service plan that's included, just like it's proposed to us. Correct?
Outright, tell me.
Yes.
So that's the same service plan as the case, correct? Correct? Three years.
Uh, we have to add a two-year service agreement for thirty-eight forty or a three-year.
That's a.
No, no, the, the three, the three thousand is the same.
Three years, three thousand. And the three, three thousand is the same, so let me just bear with me. Maybe with that same maintenance plan, correct, three years, three thousand hours. Correct? Larry, can this council commit ourselves to the five-year guaranteed buyback? Can we, could my motion include the guaranteed buyback also a hundred thousand dollars, four thousand hours, five years?
Yes.
Then I'd like to add that to my motion.
Please, I'll second.
If possible, I'd second.
So if we need to, we're going to exercise around?
Yeah.
You don't have to decide that until that lady comes. You just have to. You're saying we don't have to, but if we, if we, you wanna make that part of your motion, say.
I think that's the direction I feel we should go when we're purchasing that equipment. So I'm gonna throw it in there for discussion.
Another council could change it, but yeah.
Another council could change it.
Yep.
But I think for us, when I'm evaluating and trying to decide what to do, I think that's the best deal that we have in front of us now.
That's, that's the way I'm looking at it as well, so you're second, yeah.
So, so you're, so we're looking at the four thousand hour buyback?
Correct.
So just, just so I know this, what we're getting ready to vote on? So we're gonna spend three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two, thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-two additional dollars on the front end so we can guarantee sell it back to Caterpillar after four thousand hours for a hundred thousand dollars? Am I looking at, because that's the difference between the cat and the case.
So if you're really looking at, if I'm looking at this, it's the same. Easy numbers, one seventy-nine, we're gonna get a hundred thousand back, so it's gonna cost us eighty thousand dollars. It's minus our trade, so really, we're talking forty-four thousand dollars over the five years of actual money out of the pocket.
No, because the trade, the trade still has value, so it's still, it's still seventy-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars because the trade still has value.
Sure.
Yeah.
So when you pull the, the value of the trade out of there, it's a hundred and thirty-five one fifty. You pulled a hundred thousand out of there, it's thirty-five thousand one hundred and fifty. So, for five years or four thousand hours, the cost of that is thirty-five thousand dollars one hundred and fifty to run that machine over that span of time.
All I know is the price difference is thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. But here, that, that's not disputable. The, the maintenance programs are identical. The only, the only thing is, is that cat says after four thousand hours, they'll give you a hundred thousand bucks. Where case says have a nice day.
You say they're identical, except I just wanna clarify that you added yours. You added RDO, whereas the Butler's included in all those numbers. You, that's an additional seventy-nine oh five, just making sure that you.
Well, I'm not talking about the John Deere now, I'm talking about the case.
Sorry, John Deere, sorry.
Yeah. Mark, Mark's motion is to spend thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars more than the case just so he's guaranteed to sell it at four thousand hours for a hundred thousand bucks. That's what that guarantee's costing him, is almost thirty-one thousand bucks for that guarantee. So I, if, if I just wanted to play devil's advocate, because I'm not gonna vote for this either, but just to play devil's advocate, if you're if you're into the case for a hundred and five thousand bucks and you don't have to front that thirty-one thousand, you could literally have a fire sale on the case. You could literally sell that case for thirty thousand dollars less than the cat at four thousand hours, and it'd be lost. So.
That's why I made the comment, if, if you're really looking, we're looking strictly at dollars.
It's the case?
It's the case. I, I mean, if you're looking strictly at dollars, if we're accountable to the taxpayers of this community and they look at this and say, what the heck? You know, that's, that's why I brought that up, because if you look at the numbers.
The lease, the case, the case.
Remember this, I agree with Mark. I can't hardly say that.
Just, just to look at the numbers on paper, the buy-in on the case outright is cheaper and the lease is cheaper. The only thing the case doesn't have is guaranteed buyback. But if you're just gonna lease it, you don't need it.
Right.
Exactly.
They kinda do have a guaranteed buyback if you take the lease.
That's right.
All right, we got a motion and second on the table? Any more discussion on that? All right. Where do we vote? Brown?
Yeah.
Jones?
No.
Montan?
No.
Nelson?
Let me get easy on you, fellas. Talking about the, we're talking about the cat, all right? Yeah. No.
Gordon?
Yeah.
Kiel?
No.
Okay.
All right, we got motions on two pieces of equipment.
We have a third. Art, do you drive?
No, I wanna, I'm gonna make this back to where I started with my conversation, since nobody wants to buy anything. I'm gonna make the motion that Craig gets updated pricing to include the buyback at four thousand hours or five years. The pricing to include that from all bidders if available to include the three-year, three thousand hour maintenance plan, price re-included. And to also get a five-year lease from each bidder.
So they're all the same, is that what you're saying?
Yes. That's what I'm hearing.
That's why I kinda had to take the high road.
So I agree with that, Mark, but the problem is, they've, they've all seen everybody's stuff now.
Well, the, the nice thing, and I'm sure these guys will agree, is whether you're going off NJPA or you're going off Minnesota State bid, there is no changing of those numbers.
Correct.
So they're, they're a, a existing competitive contract, so, um, that's already set, that's what allows the, the city to buy off Minnesota State bids. As far as somebody coming in lowballing, you don't have to worry about that.
Okay, all right. And you did.
That's right.
I didn't know that.
How many hours in the lease, going into four thousand hour, to match the warranty? Yeah. And you held the four thousand hour preventative maintenance agreement too, as far as the service contract, everything up to five years.
Three year.
Three year, three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three year, three thousand.
And a lease, I guess, just educating, oh, there's a motion on the deal, isn't there?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we're discussing.
Treat down trucks.
You get, you get, okay.
On a lease, is the maintenance typically a three-year, three thousand or above, I mean?
It just depends on what the customer wants.
Okay, well. Yeah. And my motion included three-year, three thousand service plans, whether we lease or buy, that's the service plan I wanna see.
Okay. More discussion?
Then we don't have to say where their compuliers are anymore, we can just make a discussion, right?
Yep.
All right, we vote. Nelson?
Sure. Gordon? No.
Kiel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
No.
That's gonna make me out of that.
No. Go ahead. It was quarter two.
Make sure you guys call her if you have any questions whatsoever. You gotta dumb it down to Nelson's level next time, okay?
Thanks.
Pretty well. With this, I'm pretty worried you guys don't have to be here next time.
You know, that's true.
I won't have to be here for a while. It's a good thing he misses.
I know, he gets confused.
Right.
All right, let's move on, finance officer report.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Providing your packet as normal, um, I've been working this weekend doing all the month end, quarter end, um, reports. Um, kind of listing out some of the bigger, um, revenues coming in, just kind of where we are in our cash balances and our revenue expenses. Our grant program is now done, and we just go through the month of June, had a really good turnout again. Laura will actually be here, um, give you a report on, you know, our numbers and how it came out, um, at our next meeting. Swimming pool, it's going good, um, we're gonna start our second round of the swimming lessons this next week. Uh, just yesterday, the, the guys helped, um, we had a sewer back up in the bath house, so thankfully, Neil and, um.
You were the heroes.
Just to clarify that out, you were there, because it was literally coming up.
We were the heroes, we were all small, like it, we loved it.
Yeah, we just probably rose it up, got it, and they got everything all cleaned out, and it's all working good, so it should be good for a while. Um, one more reminder, like, an official workshop coming up, um, I need to by Friday, send it to registration, so if you're interested at all, I need to know.
Only Nelson's very sure.
Nelson's not driving.
Yeah.
I did just put you down, down in my truck, though.
I did. Yeah. I'm for sure, no, so I cannot say.
All right, so, if anybody does, I need to know Friday morning, so I can get it sent over to them, fax to them, so. Is there any other plan on? No. List a calendar event, and, um, the only action item I need is we need to officially make a motion to hire our new finance officer.
Make a motion to hire this finance officer. Uh, brain locking, tell me your name.
Darren Wilber.
Thank you, couldn't remember the last name.
Yeah, I am. Should we, you wanna put in there the hourly rate, the ten days vacation, the no probation?
Hang on a second, and let me find it.
Okay.
All right, guys. Where's forty-nine? I drug it out again. There it is. What's the, what's the rate? Twenty-six, what? Scroll down. Just scroll down. Be nice. There you go. Whoop, too far. Ah, twenty-six, okay, so yes, there it is. Darren Wilber, uh, starting June sixteenth, at a hourly rate of twenty, twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, uh, with ten days vacation effective for two thousand eighteen. And no probation.
Okay.
Period. Second. Stop talking.
Thank you.
All right, anybody need to hear the motion again? It was for July sixteen, right?
Yeah.
That's what trees have got on it.
That's what I'm writing down.
You had June, but that's good.
July.
Yeah. She's got you. All right.
Will.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstained? All right. All right, anything else on the finance officer piece?
Anything else for finance officer?
Okay. We'll go to see who's ready to report.
Um, just quickly go through that for you, um, and your packet, I will be out of the office next week. Jesse and Ronald told me down the port for me, so. I'm sure everything will go well.
The whole week? If you're out the whole week.
Friday, yeah.
So you came back for this meeting?
No, I'm out next week.
Oh, next week, okay.
Yes.
I thought you were saying you're going this week.
I will have my cell phone, if any emergency comes up, you can just call and get ahold of me. Uh, as mentioned, um, me, Jesse and Craig attended the I ninety exchange meeting, it was good turnout during the day for the shareholders. Um, a lot of good comments, a lot of feedback, um, Jesse attended the night one, and said that was a good, well, well-attended also, and. Um, a lot of good comments, a lot of feedback, um, Jesse attended the night one, and said that was a good, well, well-attended also, and got good feedback there. What the plan is now, you know, there were no concept plans there, they were just giving information and feedback from the public. In this fall, they will come back with maybe, uh, two or three design concepts and, and present them to the public, and then the DOT, and then it'll come down to deciding on what final design they're gonna go with. The project's still planned for twenty twenty-five, barring budget changes from the state, but that's the plan. Um, we did receive a mosquito grant, um, thirty-six oh five, um, not much, but it does help cover the cost of, um, a lot of the chemicals that we have to spray, a little less than last year, but from what I'm hearing around, a lot more cities are starting to apply for it, that the words got out that you can get those, so. There, there's only so much in the money, and then they gotta spread it all about around, so. Um, I did file an insurance claim on our break-in, those few items that we had stolen are deductible under the miscellaneous schedule, we only have a two fifty deductible for everything, it's not per items for everything, so our costs to replace are gonna be a little bit more than that, so I did file a claim on that. Um, I am advertising right now for the recreation director position, and I have so far one applicant, so hopefully we will get more in. And, um, me and Craig met last week with members of the Sioux Land Line Berry to look at the building again, go over who's gonna do what, how the construction's gonna go, you know, basically. Um, we got a month to get the project done, we're gonna do a lot of concrete work, um, he's working with the contractor, the, the senior center. It's comfortable with to, to do some of the wiring and stuff inside, but, you know, we can do the painting, now Sioux Land gave us carpet squares or whatnot, so. It's, it should go along pretty quickly, the, the biggest thing we're waiting for is the door is the longest thing on order, four to five weeks, so that'll be the last thing to put in. And actually, they said they can move into the new facility and get it set up without having the door in place, whenever the door gets there, then we'll open, so. Kinda have all, all I have for you, kind of quickly.
The city still has a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible insurance.
Huh?
Two hundred and fifty dollar deductible for insurance, the city still carries that, that's.
For, for this, under the miscellaneous schedule, so like this, all the small tools and small items are that, our buildings, we got a, um, five thousand dollar deductible, you know, we, we, different I, sections, we have bigger ones, but under this miscellaneous schedule, they cover like little things like this, it's only two fifty, yeah, so.
I haven't seen that for a long time.
Yeah, you don't see that, the long deductible. Any question?
Uh, cool, no issues? Did it turn anybody away?
No, actually, the, the years, I mean, you always have your normal kids fighting or whatnot.
No, I mean, I'm talking about, we haven't turned anybody away, the capacity.
Oh, I, as, as far as I know, they haven't had any issues, so we've had some very busy days, so. Um, Amy's done a good job, uh, the daycares have worked with us good, most of them, as far as scheduling, when they're coming, so, you know, we got some coming in the morning, some in the afternoon. Most are down to just twice a, a week, you know, or versus three or four times, so it helps.
So it's safe to say that we kind of, for lack of a better term, learned our lesson last year? I mean, I mean, as far as managing the time and all that kinda stuff.
The new policy with the large groups has, has definitely helped, because then we can manage when they come, you know, and, you know, so.
Cool.
Yeah, I think that's all better.
There's still water, good job, Neil. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, old business. Discuss possible park improvements, you had some updates in your packet on that. Um, how much has been done so far, skating park's been closed, and stuff's gonna be removed there.
Yeah, and I think people already started working on the, the rest, I, I don't think they're all gone yet, are they? But, but, it's definitely locked up and it's closed. Um, if, if they could crawl, crawl over the fence.
Right.
So a couple issues with that, but it's locked up, it's chained, and they're working on getting all the equipment out of there. So. You know, so then you asked about, you know, what you wanna see done with that area. Craig just got some real preliminary numbers before he left on vacation, as far as like resurfacing it for a tennis court, um, and I put that in your packet. It looks like everything he's seen is, depending on the size, you know, of your facility, but, you know, could be anywhere four to eight thousand dollars per court. And we have two courts there, so, you know, it could be up to sixteen thousand to resurface it and, and make it a, a decent, um, tennis court again. It's, you would need to resurface it, because it's really put it up, I mean, they.
It's crap all the way through, all the way through both quarters.
Resurface, I mean, you, you wouldn't have to pull it all the way out and put new concrete in, you're just probably.
And new coating, yeah.
Yeah.
New coating to make it smooth again.
Yeah, okay, alright.
So I mean, that's an option, um, talked a little bit with Jesse and Craig about, you know, it got thrown out there about possible, you know, make that a dog park area, and you know, there is some cons against that, just because, you know, there is cement underneath, so, you know, it's not a natural absorbent surface, it'll need to be sprayed out and cleaned every day, you might have some odor issues there. Um, it is right in the middle of the park, or close to the playground, if an animal would happen to escape, I mean, might be some liability there with the kids or families, I mean, um, it'd be. And the parks we've kinda looked at, and I've sent some information to Jesse, I think he's looked at it, have the big dogs, have from the little dogs, so you probably need some dividing fencing and stuff like that, so.
And add on that, we also learned that for, for dog parks, you don't want corners, you don't want them, that's why dogs can get trapped in the corner. You just wanna have a corner of a facility to mitigate.
And I guess it needs circle.
Yeah. Yeah, I hadn't thought of that until I was told.
I didn't know that either.
Makes sense.
I'd like to make motion to your list off.
A future meeting?
A future meeting. I'm not ready to discuss this tonight.
Yeah.
Second.
An orange.
Was that you telling us, I'm sorry?
And second.
Yep.
Alright. Brennan?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Ford?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Looks good. Thank you for that, and we'll kinda.
We'll get an old thing out, an old thing out.
Yeah, as long as we get that skate park cleaned up, I think it's a big thing, and we can think through what our options are for the other piece of it there. Thank you.
Do we even have to, oh, we, did we discuss this real quick, like, do we even have the nets available in, yet intact, or they all hatched?
For, no, for the tennis?
Yeah.
They've, they've been hatched.
Okay, so what do you know?
We haven't had anything up there for, I think, three years now, we have another tennis tent.
Okay, thank you.
New business, discuss where you don't need the South Street lots, Jesse, I, uh, what we've got in here is you wanted to hit the ball rolling on discussing this, you're not expecting action on it tonight?
Alright, just to bring your attention that for the site that we're looking at proposing, uh, the setbacks are a lot easier to construct a facility of the sites we're looking to do as, in, under community commercial rather than residential. Just an extra five feet. And if we're, if we're gonna be pitching this to an investor group possibly, which one of the outfits we're considering, it's just one less hurdle to have to jump over if they would take it upon themselves to do that process, and just try to make things as, as easy as possible going forward. Because with residential, it needs to be a finished use permit versus, in community commercial, it's a permitted use. But another question for Councilman Monahan, is facility, your facility in South Street, is that a community commercial rezoned lot?
It is.
So according to the online map that Stockholm Generation prepared for us, they have these lots as community commercial. Or the maps that we have here in City Hall have it as residential, so we need to do some more research and see which is which.
Interesting.
So this might just be a waste of time we talked about.
Do you think it is residential?
I think it's residential, because we did rezoning about three years ago, and they probably just have enough.
Yeah. C, C-COG does.
C-COG does the rezoning, not in Stockholm.
Okay, so.
But we'll check it, we'll double check it.
Double checking it, just so you're thinking about this as we're going ahead, I mean, this, this process might take, what, forty-five days to rezone, is that something about right?
Yeah, yeah, it takes a good month and a half, just 'cause, uh, you have to publicize it, gotta go through P and Z, and then it's an ordinance, so it's gotta go through two hearings of the council, so it does take time to rezone property.
If it were under residential, the only thing we would, that's not, those aren't great lots for single family, it would just be multifamily down there if anything residential, am I right, or is it?
I think they'd be good candidates for governor's homes, if, if the city wanted to look into a way to, uh, invest in residential. But I think rezoning a back to residential would be an easy process.
Would be easy.
I mean, I think, I don't think it would be in opposition, because they're currently residential, and it's a semi-residential slash light industrial area.
Okay.
What are we gonna refer to that, like, project dirty diaper, or?
Diaper cap, car diaper cap.
Good question.
It's confidential, so I mean.
DD.
Dirty diaper.
I just think you can ask, I, I actually have a, at this point, I think.
I think it was funny, I mean.
Any updates on that other project, or?
No, the only thing that I received is the project owner is out of town for a week, so they pushed back a week. But that was a week and a half ago.
A.
It's a big week.
Travis, that's the year of the week Travis.
Yeah.
Gotta do the exchange rate for time off. Sounds good. I just, I think if you've got, if you've got concerns with moving it to the commercial, let Jesse know between now and next council meeting, otherwise I think we should start getting that thing going along.
Yeah, because this, this, this one pack, right now we're planning it for community commercial facilities, there, there's a five-foot difference in the, in the facility. And so, the quicker we can get that decided, I'm, I'm just thinking about, about this now, as we start pitching that plan, it would make a difference with the way that other classrooms are not, so. And, and for the next meeting, that can be discussed, I mean, have, uh, we can rescale that, or re, reprogram the project.
And we'll have dirt showing up down there pretty soon, right?
Well, there might be important in their project up there, yeah.
Let's do, okay.
Well, being as how you brought up the five-foot difference between residential and community commercial setback. Theresa, what exactly is planning zoning looking at? Cause I heard the planning zoning minutes, and I believe it said something like they passed the ball to you to look at something in the building codes for commercial setbacks, what are they, what road are they going down?
So they're not looking at changing any of the setbacks, um, they are looking, want me to look, check with different codes, um, check with different cities on what the, are for accessory buildings, because we're all looking at maybe changing accessory buildings, sizes and setbacks, and that. Um, looking at some definition changes, um, to allow, and where I think you're maybe coming for this, is they're looking at, um, some cities allow more than one building per lot, so like if you've got apartment buildings or whatnot. We only allow one, one building on one lot, and if you do it that way, it takes more land, because you've got more setbacks in between them. Where if you've got a larger lot, and you wanna put a couple buildings on, you don't have any setback requirements, and so that's probably where you're getting the setbacks from, is that what you think?
Is that what it was, it was about, or was it, was it just accessory buildings, I can't remember what I?
No, we, we talked about several things, we talked about accessory buildings, we talked about changes and definitions, we talked about, um, defining parking, and we constituted parking a little bit.
Every, every time I, every time I read stuff like that, my radar turns on, and I imagine they're talking about smaller accessory buildings with bigger setbacks. Cause it, it never, it never seems like we go bigger and closer, we always go smaller and further away.
That's what they're looking at, smaller accessory buildings, so.
And add to what Chris is saying, there's one developer in town that would love to see that rule change for the buildings per lot.
Yeah, so they are looking at.
Their development is easier, just to add that in there.
Yeah. So, this is all just on research side, they haven't decided anything, they just had me gather the information, so we'll know more as talks progress.
Do we have anything for executive?
I would like to, so I'll make a motion, go ahead and execute a session for legal and personnel.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Younger folks, and gentlemen, good job.
Good job tomorrow, man.
What's that?